Hello, everybody. Just want to welcome all family and friends and coworkers here tonight. Let's get this meeting started. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws 1975. Said notice was advertised in Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Would everyone please rise to the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're just waiting for the guest of honors to come in the room, so... That's not him.
They might have thought the meeting would start at 7:30.
No, no, they know it's 7:30. Did you find him, John? Here they come.
You can probably go on the other side.
Gavin, you might go on this side with the camera.
By Tom.
You can go right in front of Tom. You good, Gavin? Ready? Veronica.
You ready? You gonna get everybody together?
Clean up pretty good.
Yeah.
I don't know. All right, you ready now?
All right. Item number one, Resolution 2016-174, appointing a chief of police.
Before we begin, I think they already...
No, I'm gonna read the resolution. Resolution to Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, promoting Michael C. DeBella to the position of chief of police for the township of Lacy. Mr. Quinn, you have a few words to say?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Normally, our outgoing chief would be here to take and say a few words about incoming chief, because I know Lieutenant DeBella and Chief Paprata have had a very good relationship, very close working relationship over the last couple of years. But unfortunately, Chief Paprata is in the hospital, or he just got home from the hospital after having some minor surgery. So I have been the liaison to Police Department for a number of years now since Brian Reed left, and I have the honor tonight of saying a few words about Lieutenant DeBella. And I could literally go on probably for an hour or two hours here with all I could say, but I'm gonna give you an encapsulated version of it. And I know you're all here for the honor of seeing him become the chief and the after-party that the police officers are gonna be having. So we're gonna, you know, just go through it briefly. Lieutenant, you want us to come out in the front here? There's a lot of blue over here, that's why we don't... Okay, I know there's a lot of family and friends here tonight, but for those of you that don't know, I'm just gonna give you a little history of Lieutenant DeBella, because Lieutenant DeBella has really served his entire career here with us in Lacy Township. Lieutenant joined the police force here in Lacy Township back in 1994 after he graduated from Ocean County College with a degree in, I believe it was criminal justice, associated in science of criminal justice. And during his first four years here on the force, he worked as a Class II Special and then he also worked as a dispatcher during that time. He was ultimately promoted to a full-time police officer in 1998, and he served in the Police Department from 1998 to 2002 as a police officer, involved investigations, enforcement of traffic, and basically deterred crime throughout. In 2002, he was promoted to become detective in the Lacy Township Police Department and served in that capacity with us until the year 2004. In 2004, we had the honor of promoting Mike. It was, I believe, it was the first year, or the second year I was here to become a sergeant and become part of our command staff here in the department. And it was, in my opinion, I think I'm the only one here from those days, it was one of the best moves that this department ever made, you know, getting on that path, and that's what's gotten us here tonight. Lieutenant served as a sergeant in the department until the year 2006. In 2006, he was, you know, turned over to the patrol squad, and he served as a sergeant in the patrol squad from 2006 to 2013. Another great move that the Township Committee made a few years ago was when we promoted Lieutenant DeBella to the office of lieutenant. He became a lieutenant in the year 2013. There were three other gentlemen that are over here serving as lieutenants that have really made up a tremendous, you know, force that we have here in the town. Lieutenant DeBella has served in the position of platoon lieutenant, as well as other different divisions in the lieutenant's capacity over the years. He has been a lieutenant since 2013, and he is here tonight because he is going to become the new leader of our department as our police chief here in the Township of Lacy Township. I just want to say, you know, I know that he's filling very, very big shoes. Chief Paprata was somebody that we've had for four years, and he did a fantastic job. He has made this department into one of the greatest departments in the state of New Jersey. That's not only coming from people sitting up here on this podium, people in the community, but that's coming from countywide and statewide. People we know throughout the department, in the Sheriff's Department, people we know throughout the State Police Department, have nothing but the utmost respect to this department. So Lieutenant, you're feeling, gonna fill very, very big shoes as you move forward. I take, at this point, I just want to introduce Mike's family. You know Dana, his wife, is here, and I know it's a very difficult role to play for a police officer to be the wife. The kids, Jules and Michael, I don't know who you are, but stand up and give a big wave. Come on, guys, you guys are gonna be in the line like this. And most importantly, you know, Lieutenant DeBella's father and mother come up from Florida, adopted DeBella in May. Once Lieutenant takes the oath of office and takes over as chief, you know, it's your show, you can control, you can introduce every single family member in the audience here if you like, we'd be happy to meet them all. But at this point in time, I just want to say it is truly my honor to make a motion to promote you from the office of lieutenant in Lacy Township Police Department to the office of chief of police for the department. I'm very honored and very proud of you, Michael.
I'll do a roll call for Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano.
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
And Mayor Kennas.
Yes.
At this time, I would like to swear you into office. I'd like to invite your family to stand up here, please.
Come on, Dana.
Why don't you guys stand behind Mike so we can check on him? Unfortunately, we'll all be on camera tonight. I need somebody to hold the Bible for my picture. I need you to turn, yeah, turn around, right? And then we can keep by the cameras, okay? You're gonna place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. You'll just repeat after me. I'll do as slow as I can do here. I, Michael C. DeBella.
I, Michael C. DeBella.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully,
That I will faithfully,
impartially,
Impartially.
and justly,
And justly.
perform all the duties of chief of police.
Perform all the duties of chief of police according to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
The government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir. It's been a great honor to present you tonight with your stars for chief's position. I'd like to present it to your father, so he can pass them along and your wife can place them on your lapel down. Knock through his heart, Dana, knock through his heart. Congratulations.
Chief, is there anything I'd like to ask?
I appreciate it. Wow. I can't even, I don't even know where to begin. There are so many people here that have supported me throughout my entire career. Like I said, I don't even know where to begin. I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Everybody that's supported me throughout my 22-year law enforcement career to date. My father, my mother, my family, Joanna, Mimo, my sister, my uncle. You know, I can go on, my mother-in-law, my aunt Michael. I can keep going and going and going. I don't want to take it up. Everybody's comfortable. We have some more law officers coming up here, so I won't take up too much time. I do want to acknowledge a couple other people. Chief Formery, back in 2004. You know, he gave me a chance, and he brought me on as the first ever, I remember, first ever Class II Special here in Lacy. And I owe you for that. Thank you for... As much as I'm ready. Much respect, I appreciate it. So if I didn't acknowledge it, please let us know that everybody that's here, thank you very much. I appreciate your support. My command staff that we'll be bringing up, Pat and some lieutenants, my present lieutenants, and every officer that's here, again, I want to thank you. I know Mr. Quinn had mentioned Chief Paprata. You can ask anybody, any of these officers here, any of our employees and so going, we all have a lot of respect for Chief Paprata. He has taken this department to new heights since he has been here. He has brought it up, he has set the bar way high. So I know that I'm gonna have to do a lot to maintain that bar and get past that bar. But again, I know with the support of my command staff, the support of every one of my police officers and employees in the Police Department, I know we can do it, and I know we can even surpass that. So again, thank you, and I look forward to the future.
Item three, Resolution 2016-175, appointing a police captain.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, promoting Patrick Gannon to the position of captain for the Lacy Township Police Force. Before we take a moment on that, I'd like to call Chief DeBella up. He has the brief synopsis of Captain Gannon's career.
Wow, another unique opportunity.
There's gonna be a lot of them.
Well, I had the opportunity to introduce Patrick Gannon to my captain moving forward. I consider Patrick one of my best friends. Throughout my career, again, 22 years, Patrick has really been a mentor towards me. I have a lot of respect for Patrick. I remember back in 1998 when I got the phone call that I was gonna be hired as a full-time police officer. I remember that conversation I had with Pat. And going out to dinner after that, and the conversation that we had that night. I just have a lot of respect for you. I thank you, and I look forward to my career moving forward. Having you by my side is a lot, as well as the other command staff officers, Patrick. Patrick joined the Police Department in 1996, a couple of years after me. Mother to the rank of sergeant, 2005, and then to lieutenant in 2013. For the past eight years, Patrick has worked in the Support Services Division of our Police Department. Basically, that's a lot of things that happened behind scenes that really not many people hear about. If it wasn't for Patrick and the work he's put in, we wouldn't be where we're at today. We're both motivated, we both have a lot of energy. Well, actually, Patrick's got more energy. But I look forward to it. He's been in Lacy Township for 33 years. Married to his wife Tracy for 21. Tracy, where are you? I know you're somewhere in here. 21 years, I consider Tracy a good friend of mine as well. 2015, Patrick received his National Degree in Administrative Sciences and fairly decent. Patrick, I'm proud of you. I'll look forward to spending the rest of our careers moving forward, and thank you very much, appreciate everything about it.
Thank you.
Is there a captain's office? I need to have a motion for the resolution.
I make a motion, we approve. Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas? Captain Gannon, would you like to be this way, please? Do you have a family with you tonight?
She's hot back there.
She's hot. Tracy, come on up here, I'm gonna let you hot. Oh, and up your hat, yes! I was holding the Bible, I'm ready.
This guy here, give it to him.
Yeah, come on, come on.
Come on, buddy.
Come on, you get to hold this.
Give it to the face, I'll say.
Left hand up, now, Uncle Pop's hand has to go on the Bible. We have to turn here, so you can use the hand here. No, not that wrong hand. I, Patrick Gannon.
I, Patrick Gannon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully,
That I will faithfully,
impartially,
Impartially.
and justly,
And justly.
perform all the duties of police captain.
Perform all the duties of police captain.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. See lots of pictures there, see lots of pictures. You don't have to make a scene in there, I'm not gonna make a scene.
Item five, Resolution 2016-176, appointing a police lieutenant.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, promoting Vincent Meehan to the position of police lieutenant in the Township of Lacy Police Department. Chief DeBella, would you like to...
I had the pleasure of working with Vince many years, so I'm gonna bring him up here. What can I say about Vince? Hard-working individual, gives it his all every day. Only guy in the department that put in 18 years without getting a sick day. Number one, Peace Academy, 1995. He's been here since 1995, he's been a resident police technician for 45 years. Just a really and truly good worker. Outside of work, to destruction, I've worked with him. So, yeah, he's a machine. He's, was promoted to sergeant in 2013. He's been working in Patrol Division. He's doing a great job for us, he's a true leader of men. So he's doing a great job as lieutenant, and I'm proud to have him on the service.
Captain Gannon, get all the spotlight. Something very unique about Vince is he's very dedicated to the Police Department and who we're actually seeing by Captain Gannon, states of, in my case, United States, 18 years. He's come out number one on the last three promotional visits that he's taken. Then one year, he came out number three in the entire state of New Jersey. I'm not really sure if everybody knows what type of a sacrifice and what goes in when we study for these exams. My family can tell you, my kids can tell you, it's really six months of just working, barely sleeping, and studying all the time. It really is a huge sacrifice on us, a huge sacrifice on the families. I know Vince put a lot of work into getting to where he is tonight. I have my respect. I'm looking forward to working with you moving forward, and thank you very much.
Can we make a motion for a resolution? I make a motion, we... Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Now, I'm able to swear you into office. Megan? Both of you, can you share this?
Got it?
Got it? That's it for Santa, okay? I, Vincent Meehan.
I, Vincent Meehan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully,
That I will faithfully,
impartially,
Impartially,
and justly,
And justly.
perform all the duties of police lieutenant.
Perform all the duties of police lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Item seven, Resolution 2016-177, appointing a police lieutenant.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, promoting Paul J. Sullivan to the position of police lieutenant for the Lacy Township Police Department. As to who's introducing Lieutenant Sullivan, is it Chief DeBella or Captain Gannon?
Paul Sullivan Jr. Again, I have a great opportunity to introduce to you Paul Sullivan Jr. Began in Lacy Township in about 2001, promoted to sergeant in 2014. Currently assigned to the Patrol Division. Spent 33 years residing in Lacy Township, graduated from Lacy Township High School, and also advanced degrees from Carley Dickinson University. Married to his wife, born for 10 years.
Yeah.
And he has three kids, I'm gonna try to get this right, Kuntor, Cole, and Christian.
You're good.
Excellent worker, Chief Jake Sullivan, extremely motivated. We share the same visions for the Police Department. Again, I have a lot of respect. The one thing I can say is, I had the courage to work with his father, Paul Sullivan Sr., when I started my career 22 years ago. Whatever your dad did, he did the right thing. And I wish he would share tonight, because I would come up with a white towel that you're boy you love. Do I flag that?
It's all good, too.
I'm proud of you. But, no, I thank you, I apologize. Again, comes from a family of law enforcement, his father, 25 years retired from Lacy Township. I believe your grandfather was also an officer in the DMW, so... And I look forward to working with him, and thank you.
Before I'm able to swear him into office?
I make a motion. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Lieutenant Sullivan? Who gets to hold this? All right, baby, you gonna help me? And just repeat, I, Paul J. Sullivan.
I, Paul J. Sullivan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully,
That I will faithfully,
impartially,
Impartially,
and justly,
And justly.
perform all the duties of police lieutenant.
Perform all the duties of police lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the government established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. Good job, guys. You and the chief, chief, you'd like a picture with Lieutenant John.
Before we let them go, any comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor. A great evening in Lacy Township, to be sure. In Lacy, anywhere you look, we show our Lacy pride. And with our Police Department, they really do push till it gives. Very, very proud. Very, very proud of them, it's an honor to be up here, especially on a night like this evening. And our police, when we see the different events that they're at throughout the year, how busy they are in our newspapers, in these uncertain times around the world where police sometimes unfortunately aren't appreciated, I know that's not the case here in Lacey, it's not the case up here behind the microphones, it's not the case with the people in front of me and the families. I want to thank each and every one of them for their outreach into our schools. They know if you, you know, you want to cultivate a tree, you start at the roots, they have a presence in our schools, I'm very grateful for that, they do a lot of prevention work, I'm very grateful for that. They keep us safe, they keep our roads safe. And the sacrifice that their families make is something that frankly, as a civilian, I don't understand, but I have a great, deep appreciation for. I love all of you, and very thankful and grateful for all that you do, I mean that from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Well, it's the changing of the guard, and very simply, the best is to stand a little bit better. I'll thank you on behalf of the citizens, because you guys do a wonderful job. We're not a perfect community by any stretch, but you guys keep us going in that direction, that's all we can ask from you. And in this day and age, may God be with you.
Thank you. Can you meet Giuliano?
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't know what to say, I think we've said a lot about him, I've known every one of yous for a long time. I appreciate, as a resident of Lacey Township, as a committee member in Lacey Township, everything you do for us, that's the command force right on through. To see all it is blue in one room touches me. As Chief Reese knows, my mom was a police officer for 23 years. I know what it's all about, what you guys do, I just want to tell you, be safe out there, you know, there's a lot of things happening out in that world, just keep your mind straight, and thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mike Quinn?
Again, thank you to everyone for coming out tonight, tonight really marks the next chapter in the police department here in Lacey Township. I've sat here, I guess, with three different chiefs over my time here, I didn't have the honor of serving when Chief Tony was on here, but Tommy, there's still stories around this building that people just can't stop talking about. But I, you know, I know Chief DeBella's gonna do a fantastic job, he has the respect of all the men and women in this room that work in the department, moving forward with the command staff that he put in place, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that we are gonna reach higher than the bar that Chief Ebrother has set. Each and every one of these people in this room gives their heart and soul to Lacey Township, and like Committeeman Cortolo says, you know, we're kind of in a bubble here in Lacey Township, and the community has nothing but the utmost respect for everything each and every one of you do. So, we thank you as a committee, you know, we are, as you know, we're always here behind you, we're always trying to do everything we can to keep moving the department forward. But a special thanks I have to send out to the families that are here tonight, because, you know, we talk about it, usually every year when we get to our emergency service, bankers and different things about the sacrifice every family makes when their loved one is involved in a police department, emergency services, any way whatsoever. If there's an emergency, they take off right away, you know, family, family's the most important thing in your life, your family's the help, but at the end of the day, they have a job to do, serving the community, and they never waver on doing that, they do a tremendous job. I've, you know, been very honored to work with so many of you people in this room, I think over the last eight years, we've brought on 13 new officers alone, which every one of them is 150% qualified, and we're very fortunate to have everyone in this room, so, I thank you. Dana, your life is going to change drastically, you're a wonderful person, you know, we've had a great working relationship with you here in town, and, you know, we're here for you, anything you need, and, you know, Mike is gonna be probably less available than he has been. And to the kids, you know, you should be very, very proud of that, he's a wonderful, wonderful officer, and he's gonna lead this department into the next, you know, couple of years, and after that, he'll make sure that he set that bar even higher for the next chief, so, thank you all for coming, Chief DeBella, very best of luck to you, lieutenants, you know, each of you, the four of you, I know you're gonna be standing right behind him, doing fantastic jobs, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric. And simply put, without repeating whatever they just said, I wish you guys the best of luck, congratulations, you obviously have the support of everybody here in this room, and Mike, I'm sure you have the opportunity to call on former chiefs, I know when I became mayor, I call on former committee member all the time, so, they're a great resource, I'm sure they'll be valuable to you, so. With that, I'll open up to the public, does the public have any questions or comments?
About our new inductees here, any comments?
I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank the committee, the mayor, everybody here, I appreciate your support, everybody here, I so appreciate your support, and thank you for giving me the opportunity, and I look forward to working with you, thank you very much. I'd also like to thank our governing body, it's one of the finest committees I've worked with, I've been here for 21 years, and had to run through many of them, and I appreciate all the support you've done with us, and it's gonna be us to where we need to be in the police department. We have a great community, and it's really an amazing place to live and work, we're fortunate, we have a great group of people here, I look forward to serving with you for the remainder of my career, and you've always been the best police department I could ever wish to work with, thank you.
And with that, we'll give everybody a moment, I'm gonna take a break.
You guys can leave. Whoever wishes to leave.